I think we have a quorum.
Cynthia, I don't know what happened. It's Kathleen. This is the first time I haven't had my picture, me.
Yeah.
I signed in and signed out to try and fix that and we'll just have to do it without me. I look fine, everybody.
There's a place where you start or stop video, Kathleen.
Pardon?
There's a place where you start or stop video.
Can I do that now or do I go back?
Yeah, you can do it now.
The menu is somewhere. I don't know how I got there, but.
Town works the same way.
Oh, I see it. I got it. I got it. Good. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Very helpful. I wonder how it got unstopped.
There we go. Good, good.
I told you, I look just normal.
Am I at a token mail at this meeting? What's going on here?
I guess so.
Let's call the order.
Okay.
Since it's 5:03. Welcome. Thank you for attending. The first item of business, of course, is the approval of the June minutes. Of a motion. Mary, Pam, second. Favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. Consent agenda, treasures report, directors report, anything you are attention. No? Good. All right. Oral reports. We were gonna have Ms. Smith from the Friends. Is she on or?
No, I can give a little report, though, based on their last meeting.
Yeah, and we have the, we all received their minutes from their June 22 meeting.
Right, right.
Teresa, you and I were both on the call. You wanna, wanna hit the highlights?
Yeah, the main topic was getting the next chapter up and running. They, this past Saturday, they had their first donation day since March, I think. And they were inundated with donations. I think people were mostly well behaved. They had wanted everyone to stay in their cars until they got invited in and then they would drop their stuff off, but people got impatient and decided just to leave things on the front steps, which is, you know, then leads to the Friends having to lift all the heavy books and actually bring them inside, so. Yeah, so hopefully, hopefully, next time, if it's the same, people kind of get used to a routine or maybe we can, maybe we can try to do some sort of like drive-through type situation where, you know, you get to the front of the line.
Yeah, or appointments. In other words, maybe five in a half hour or in fifteen minutes. You know, in other words, tell people exactly when they can come.
Yeah, so, I mean, people wanted to chat a lot, so that kind of backed it. Everyone, no one had seen each other for a while, so there was a lot of chat going on, so.
Difficult. I dropped some things off, too, but people weren't signaling people who were in their car to come in. So maybe if they just had a line that was appropriately distanced for people to line up, bring their, their books in, it might be easier than the "we'll get you at your car."
Yeah.
It just didn't seem, that piece did not seem to work efficiently, so.
Well, I'll tell you, I had to bring my lab to have her nails clipped to the vet and they have a very good procedure there. One person comes out with a mask to whatever car was first or, you know, in order of, let's say, calling in, and it, it works seamlessly. And then when they come out, you know, so people are not getting out of the car until they're supposed to.
Yeah, I think people were not necessarily paying attention to the "stay in your car" or they didn't know, so.
All right.
But, combination of things, I'm sure. Anyway, so we'll see how that goes next month, but they're gonna be open on Saturday by appointment for book dealers. Only a few have signed up so far. Hopefully, we'll get a few more this week. And then next weekend, they'll be open for Roxbury Residence and they're not, they're not really advertising it. It's not gonna go into the big book sale finder website, trying to keep it low-key. Yeah, so they, what else is going on? I think that's about it. Their mailer went out. I'm sure you all got it. And I think we're all caught up with their reimbursements for the year. They, they supported the summer reading program and all the prizes and have officially paid for our two new computers, so.
Yes, they are caught up.
Yeah.
Terrific. Thank you. Okay. Annual fund drive year end, the number, thanks to everybody, is 51,915. So that is a very good number for us this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is terrific, given everything that we've got to do. So I thank everyone who made a contribution and, of course, we thank the P-Balls for the total of $15,000.
That was wonderful.
Well, that's great.
Oh, that's pretty tricky, Mary. Sorry. I gotta learn how to do that.
So, action agenda. Pam is gonna give us a little bit of background about where we are financially and Teresa is going to explain briefly the three projects that we want to get done at the Hodge and what we want you to be aware of before you decide whether you think we should do this is that the town has announced that because the collection of taxes is delayed by three months, cash flow is also delayed, their war ordinarily, if we had an approved capital item ordinarily first of July, when the new budget year started, we would submit it for reimbursement on goal payment. They're not gonna be covering those items until second quarter of their year. So, we have assurances, not in writing, we have oral assurances that the money that has been designated for us, the approved capital budget, will be paid. So we have an element of risk. We also have an element of the fact that we need to spend more money than they have. The Board of Finance has approved to the term of somewhere between $9,000 and $11,000, depending on some factors. So, we thought possibly that you would think it would be a good idea to do these expenditures and take this risk, but I want to see what you, what you think. So let's let Pam just give us a rough, you know, overview of finances.
Okay, a lot of what I said was just discussed, so I won't repeat too much of it. Our preliminary fiscal year 2019, '20 budget numbers are in. They're not finalized until after our auditor comes in, in the middle of the summer and then I give you a variance report, which since we're closed in August, will be in September. So I won't give you any totals until that time. And, but basically, I was gonna talk about AFD as a prelude to our discussion of Hodge. As Cynthia said, we're very fortunate this year. Our very generous community of donations, both large and small, came in. As always, we, we have a great group of people who support our mission. And then we had a couple of other large donations come in, including the ones mentioned, which caused us to be up about $17,000 from our target, which is phenomenal. Our expenses, without going into the detail at this point, a lot of the categories were above what we budgeted. Were able to absorb with this extra increase, a lot of those costs. And we had talked about a few ways that we might consume the remainder and that was maybe having a better auto checkout system, which Teresa and I had talked about, where people could social distance. That's kind of in the offing, but, but that was one way. And then, obviously, on our agenda has been a session of the things we need to do to Hodge, to keep the Hodge open. So, I'm not quite sure where to stop here, but the total right now of the bids that we have for the three components for Hodge repairs is about $36,000. As Cynthia said, the town has committed to pay capital reimbursement and the Board of Finance committed to about $25,000 of that. So, you know, nine to 11 was what Cynthia had proposed and that's certainly within the realm of the excess that we have coming out of this budget year into next. Let's see.
You wanna speak to the risk element in terms of town? Do you have any feeling, you expressed a feeling to me that you thought it was a reasonable risk.
I do. I, I think, you know, we have their commitment to a number of us that, and through a number of discussions, that they would commit to that $25,000 and very specifically what those pieces are, which I'll let Teresa speak to. And we have Andy engaged in, in our specifics going forward, which I think is a great partnership with the town. So I feel very comfortable, you know, they've given their commitment that they would support us. The only thing that's shifted is when the funding is available, not if the funding is.
The time, the timeframe, yeah.
Right. Any other notes here that I forgot? Teresa, do you wanna go into any of the specifics for this meeting or are the gross good?
Just to say that, you know, I've been in touch with Andy and Barbara about this. Just trying to keep everybody in the loop. And I do need to get a couple more estimates for particularly the crawl space. I also need to get another one or two for the well and the furnace. So the numbers that, you know, that $36,000 that we mentioned is kind of, you know, it could go, it could go, probably won't go up, it could go down, if, depending on how the other estimates come in.
The $36,000 includes some estimate for everything?
It includes an official estimate for each item, yeah.
So, okay.
So just briefly, what, Teresa, you mentioned to Cynthia and I, the new well, the lower estimate so far is $7,400. New furnace, the higher estimate so far, which is more of a complete view of what we might need at the Hodge. Talking zones, et cetera, is $13,900. And dehumidifying the crawl space is a kind of a nebulous $14,750. So $36,050 is, is what we have now with the estimates. But we, we need to comply with the town's request of three estimates for each capital project.
And the variation, the $2,000 difference I mentioned, Teresa explained that Andy feels we should try an approach with the basement to not put a physical piece of equipment for dehumidification until we see if the rest of the fixes help the problem. So he has told us to hold off for a year before buying that, that component. So that makes that, that cost, which was $14,700, more like $12,700.
I was gonna ask, I presume that there's sort of an order, that not everything will be happening at once, but there would be an order of doing?
Correct. And I think our main, main concern is to get that furnace fixed.
So that's number one.
We would start, we would start there so that whatever else happened, the Friends would be able to continue to raise money for us.
Not to get down on the weeds on this thing, but if there's a crawl space there that you're worried about humidity problems, instead of putting in a dehumidifier and everything, maybe just ventilation, you know, a temperature control fan or humidity control fan kind of thing, to vent it out, might, might be an alternate plan.
Teresa, Teresa, you know, thanks, Teresa has a, an elaborate proposal from a company who does this kind of thing. After the meeting, want to share that with Jeff because it's.
Well, it's only $40,000 for my fan, Teresa. That's the same price I charge for the other project.
Is it gold?
Question, Pam, just to reiterate, we don't have to liquidate anything in order to cover this cash flow, have we?
Not right now. It, it looks good. It depends upon when the projects fall out and obviously, we're not finished getting our, our bids yet, so.
I was wondering if.
We do have cash set aside in both the Hodge and the minor accounts, so we could, you know, if need be, if we don't have the cash flow, we could borrow and then reimburse.
So if it works.
I'm sorry, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to sell any stock or bonds.
So if the grant was the first thing and, and payments were needed before the three-month delay from the town, we would be able to, to cover it comfortably?
Yes.
Correct.
I would think that you'd want to prioritize before the winter that, to make sure you get a new furnace in there before winter.
Right.
I mean, it's. Anything's more efficient than what you've got in there. And if it all, if it all goes, collapses, then you're under the gun to get it. You're in for a big repair plus, plus a new installation, so.
I think that's, that's, that's a good point and we, we know with so many people renovating Roxbury that there, there's gonna be demand for all of those services. Teresa has to get one more estimate and she has a vendor to get that from St. Pierre, right? So as soon as that comes in, should be able to make the right decision and go ahead and get this, this part taken care of right away. So, what do you think? You're, you're nodding. I see heads nodding. A good sign or a bad sign?
Good sign.
Okay, someone would praise a motion then for us? Anybody? Mary?
I move that we start with the furnace project.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, can we, show of hands on that. Favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Say, that carries. Should we act on the other two items or would you prefer? I, I would kind of like to get the, the other two lined up because we won't meet again officially until September.
I move to approve all three projects.
Okay.
Get going.
Okay, so, given the assumptions that we, we laid out, that we would move to approve them. Specifically, if we heard something from the town that made us, that gave us pause, we could stop and think about it again. The well might be something to say, okay, well, we may have to see. I, I have no idea how their tax collections are gonna go.
Okay.
I don't think anybody does. So, there's a motion on the, on the table. Second, I mean, yeah, second. Mary?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Show of hands.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries. Thank you. That's great. All right, back to strategic discussion. The strategic plan, we had started to talk about it, if you recall. I just, I'm a bit hesitant to do a lot until we can meet again face to face. I, I'm not sure that this is the best discussion form. What are your thoughts?
I actually agree with you on that, A, but B, we don't have any clarity as to what we're dealing with yet. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to plan in this environment where we really don't know where we are. I mean, I think it's difficult to build a strategy. That's my opinion.
Normal may be a very different thing in a year or two.
Right, that's right.
And we have no clarity.
Nobody has a crystal ball. This is enormous change. It's not gonna be the same, that's for sure.
New territory, yeah, new territory. So it doesn't hurt to wait, you know, we waited this long to wait till we get back, hopefully. You know, when we start meeting, hopefully, we can do that, keeping a little distance and, and pick it up in, in September or October.
Whatever happens. Okay, that's good. Where am I on this now? The, the one element that we're going to go ahead and, and ask Teresa specifically was her idea to work on, which is, which is an emergency response plan that covers COVID and other events. And when that is done and reviewed by the board and okay, that can be an element of the strat plan going forward. But she has a lot of good thoughts as to what to do, when and if another wave hits, how to run the library, how to deal with staffing, you know, putting a lot of thought over these four months as to, as to what we did and how it worked out. So I'd like you just to endorse that idea and let Teresa go ahead and, and work on, on that document for us.
So specifically disaster plan, then?
That's it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And how people are affected by it and the responsibilities of the library and the changes that may have to take place and so forth.
Yeah, well, we can just lay out the safety precautions, things we do for everything. We didn't know exactly how to do before, but Teresa worked out in real time.
Yeah.
How we could anticipate to some extent. Okay, that's great. I think that'd be a good document to have. Teresa, what do you think about sending us that document? When would you wanna do that?
I, I think I can try to have it ready for the September meeting.
All right, maybe a little bit before so we could review it?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's say, let's say Labor Day.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Oh, I see. I carefully wrote down COVID resurgence plan. Oh, well. The director's review by the Personnel Committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
As we do annually, the Personnel Committee got together with Teresa to review progress against the goals and we have an updated document that I think is finalized now, Teresa, right?
Uh, no, not from, not from our meeting on, for my goals for next year?
No, 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 for this year, for the year that we finished.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So when you're finished updating that. No, 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 not next year. Don't worry, don't worry. So when you're finished with the updates after, you know, since we just met, just perhaps you can forward them to the full board. You know, there were many challenges this year and a lot of extra additional components that were added in, which Teresa, as always, handles with such aplomb. So I'd like to say thank you for a wonderful year, for all that you do for us.
Thanks, Kathleen.
I figured that out while we were here.
That's great.
And then, of course, we will be working on, actually, this year's goals, you know, as, as the next couple of months continue. Did, do you have anything to add, Teresa, or?
Um, not really, but I, I thank the Personnel Committee and I'll thank the board as a whole for being a very good board, nice to work with and, yeah, so, you know, you hear horror stories. So I'm so glad you guys are such a kind, supportive board, so thank you.
It's easy to be supportive of somebody who does such a great job, so thank you.
Absolutely.
You should see me when I'm not happy.
I'll try to keep you happy, Kathleen.
You do a phenomenal job and I'm very appreciative of it.
Teresa, you didn't mention that when the Personnel Committee met, we met outside on the terrace. We all kept our distance and other than sipping water and whatever, we, we tried to keep our masks on as much as we can.
Yeah, it worked out well. It worked out well, outdoor space.
It did, yeah.
Terrific. Okay, um, we have a, it's time to do the annual fundraiser. Anybody have any ideas they wanna share or do you want, basically, to start with our, with a revision of our regular format with the four-page document with one insert page? Maybe this year directed specifically in new, new paper open town? Welcome to newcomers.
Yeah, we had mentioned, I, I think, before that there are several, I don't know how many, new people. I have a new neighbor next door and, and, yeah, I think it's important for them to know some of the things that go on at our library and we do for the community.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if we have 20, 30 new families.
I don't, I don't have a clue. I don't, I mean, because we haven't, you know, we're sort of so isolated, so all I know is what's really around here.
There's way more than that.
Too many cars on the road. I see people walking on the road. I don't know, but I don't know if they're visiting somebody or their new neighbor. I don't know, you know.
In a lot of parks, there are a lot of new individuals out of state plates, people who have purchased.
All the weekends are on fire, which is about half of the houses are full and, and full, full-time. And like, my neighbor has four kids. There's another neighbor up the street with two kids. There's a lot of families that have moved in. It's almost doubled the population of the town, I think.
South Street.
No kidding. Oh, my God.
South Street's a popular walking street and I see, I see, I see tons of people that I had no recognition of. I wave politely and smile from a distance, but there, there are a lot of new, a lot of new blood in town.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Teresa, is there an idea to kind of focus your insert this year on?
Yeah.
Both, or did you have something else in mind?
No, I think that's a good thing. I mean, our programming and stuff is a little light right now, just because necessity. So I think getting it in there to encourage people to sign up for library cards and how they can, something they can take advantage of while they're here, so, yeah, certainly fill a page.
Maybe a big sign on the lawn of the library saying, "Welcome to new members of town." Come on.
I like that, Alan. I like.
I mean, a big sign. It's gotta be.
Okay. Okay.
Some of these people, I think we talked about the last time, are very wealthy. I mean, or they're of some wealth, in order to be able to afford a weekend home out of Manhattan. So the more we can do to connect with them while they're up here, and they're going to stay here for the foreseeable future.
I think a number of people are going to stay here for good. I mean, they.
It's not commutable, though. So somehow, some people may stay, some may go. But in the meantime, we are a great lifeline. Like your lawn game, Lollapalooza idea is fantastic. And I think it'll be fun. And I know, like, someone famous lives on South Street in Apple with an eight-year-old who I see playing by himself all the time. And I would love, I don't know them, but I'd love to say, is get that kid into the library and let's go to lawn game, Lollapalooza, and meet some other kids in town in a socially-distanced way.
Yeah, the problem is, it's such a hard time to do that. Yeah. I know.
But going back to the sign idea in front of the library, how to get the word out to people who live here, who may or may not be getting mail at their homes, you know, it could be going somewhere else. We don't know. So.
Yeah, I love that. I love that. Great idea, Alan.
Yeah, I gotta clap, but it's too much trouble. Sorry. I'll do it.
So as you say, for fundraising purposes, it's helpful to send them a welcome with a donation envelope and card. Whatever else we can do to Barbara. Get people to know that there is Barbara's outreach and library outreach. You know, the more we can do, the better.
I had to tell my neighbors about these things, the robo-calls, the emails. They were unaware of them.
Exactly.
And didn't know that those things existed. And they're so appreciative of the robo-calls and the emails, so they knew what was going on.
I could put that in next rec newsletter, which presumably goes to every house. So, but I did talk to somebody the other day who is one of those now living here full-time people, was just a weekend, now is here all the time. And they were not getting, they don't get any mail here.
That's my point. Yes.
So I guess they weren't even getting the rec newsletter, which goes to all the Rock. So, you know, in that kind of case, I don't know what to do. But I can certainly put something in the newsletter, which I think goes to almost everybody.
Does it town collect email addresses?
They do at Town Hall. But I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if they do on the out, when they, you know, people first move in or what.
We're going to look at the list of new people as soon as we can get an appointment over at Town Hall. That's usually something we do in July. Where we can check out who's got emails, or at least we would have a proper mailing address for everybody. Emphasize that message.
Do we have extra copies of the rec newsletter in hard copy form, Teresa, that we could leave at the library?
No. Um, I can ask Linda. I don't know if there ever are extra copies. I mean, we get the one that comes in the mail and we can put that out, but.
What about online? What about online? Our website?
It do get posted on the town website. I don't know how often that gets updated, but they usually are there.
Okay.
Usually.
Do we want to link to that, then, perhaps?
Um, yeah, I can. I'll have to check it to see how recently he updated that. I mean.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't know, the town website still says the library is closed.
Yeah. So I don't know how often these things get updated.
Yeah.
I would, sometimes you have to nudge. I think Jimmy does the web stuff. He needs a nudge now and again.
Yeah. Make an extra nudge.
Big stick.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll share documents in terms of the fundraiser, but we won't try anything brand-new. We'll stay with tried and true listing names of donors, ranking activities at the library with a special focus on new residents and how, and us services.
Right. Good.
A lot of people, if they've got kids, I guess they're going to be checking in with Booth. And Shabba, so we'll somehow make sure we're talking with them, Teresa.
Yeah.
I've been thinking, as we're having this conversation, and I don't know exactly how to think of implementing in terms of our fundraising, but it seems that there are those people who have been really hurt financially by what's going on. And there are those people who are not spending what they normally spend. And it just seems to me that there's some money out there that's not going to a whole lot of things. And is there a way to capture that, to say, you know, this is an essential service that is still happening for you? And there are some people that really have a lot of excess because there's all sorts of things they can't do. And is there some way to communicate? Think of us.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that's our theme.
The grand tour of Europe is what was off this year.
Seriously, there's so many things you can't spend money on that you normally do. And there, you know, for some people it's hard, but for other people, there's a lot of extra change in those pockets.
Well, especially for the new people, you know, our Page Four itemizes source of revenue, the way we spend money. We might want might want to take a look at that. Maybe you'll have some suggestions about if that information should be moved to a more primary position in the newsletter.
Take your movie money and put it into books.
Yeah, also, how the library works for our community. You know, thinking a positive thing, what we can do for our community residents. You know, really highlight that. Even though we're going through this pandemic time, you know, things that are still very positive that's going on at the library, I think should be highlighted.
Yeah, like no matter even if we're closed, the delivery, you know, the special services that are being offered to keep people, you know, able to use this resource, that's, you know.
Yeah, first access with the ebooks.
Right.
Unlike many institutions, we didn't close, thanks to Teresa's efforts. We were open in some form or capacity through it all.
Because we consider it essential.
In ways that others weren't.
That's right.
Still haven't opened.
So I think we have to highlight that, is what I'm saying. Sure everybody agrees, because, you know, they'll say, yeah, all right, I'm not spending money, but why don't I give it to you? We got to convince them.
So, I just wanted to say, I'm getting in my head that something's coming clearer. And there's kind of two conversations that are getting merged into one. So the fundraising letter, yes, we should be over and ask for money. And you know how I feel about ask for as much money as we can. That's fine. That's good. It's great. We got to lay some pipe beforehand. And meaning that you've got to lay the groundwork to make people want to give. And I'm specific of these now-full-time weekenders who do have pockets. We know they have them because they couldn't be here that way otherwise. And so the outreach that we're talking about, like the sign that Alan mentioned on the front lawn, I'm trying to figure out some way to lay the pipe to really welcome them specifically and draw them into our community, so that when the fundraising letter arrives, they're more than willing to write a check.
One of the things that Teresa mentioned, and I'll, you know, mention it again, is that during this period that we're all going through, that a lot of our programs that are, you know, virtual now, there are more people attending them. And so that should be highlighted. We still have programs and so many people are flocking to that and list some of the programs we have. I mean, that's what I would do. That's, you know, showing them what we still have. Even though you can't come in in person, there are so many resources we still offer and that are used, that people are using.
Is there, I don't know what the timing is like on, I can't remember now, the timing. But if we were able to get the addresses and names of the new residents, we could send them a card with, you know, the link for signing up for a library card and like a brief message about some of the stuff that they can get at the library. And then, you know, a month or so later, the annual appeal comes in the mail.
I think you could probably tie it even a little tighter. Maybe the last week in August, everybody, the people who are going to need to deal with schools will have done that and they'll start to be familiar. We could send a postcard and then follow it up within two weeks with the fundraiser. And you could do, you could do a Zoom open house.
That's true.
Great idea.
Do you want us to email you? Oh, there's a deer walking right by my window. Do you want us to email you the new address, the new resident? Or just put it on a list, or what?
I think.
Teresa, go ahead.
I think we can get the list from Town Hall, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
But like, supposing, I think actually what Joan's asking is a good question, because it appears we are meeting our neighbors and trying to help them get assimilated. So I know Sonia and Alberto Sanchez, who live next door to me, are on the list at Town Hall, because I gave them the list. But I don't know about the people, Jeff, that you know on the other end of the street, you know.
We have the topic coming up next about our annual thank you to donors.
Right. Right.
Why don't we add to that? Anybody who's got a couple of new neighbors and so on, take it upon themselves to introduce the library to them. And there'd be no harm in getting more than one message.
Yeah. Yeah.
So my question is, how do you want me to do that? Do you want me to send you the name or just me personally to look to them? Which I actually have.
Yeah, I mean, unless they don't seem amenable to be approached by a stranger. Maybe you've already met them.
No, I have. They've been to my house already, so, you know, I mentioned them on the board. No, but the point is, we sat outside, we distanced. Anyway, but do you want me to send somebody the name? I mean, Teresa, do you want me to send the name and address? Or not yet?
I think the point is, we'd like to do both. We'd like any board that who has that kind of a connection with a new neighbor to support with them.
Okay.
And tell about the library and activities, whatever's appropriate for that family. And then we'll also send them a postcard at the end of August and then we'll follow that up mid-September with the annual fund drive. And we can get clarity as to their preferred mailing address and all that kind of thing.
Okay.
And to that point, and an earlier point about being able to reach these people, because some people don't have active addresses up here, we should probably, for the newcomers anyway, just see if there's a contact that'll work, whether they have a local address now and if they don't, find some other way to make contact, so they don't miss the AFD letter coming in September.
Yeah.
Or an email.
Emails.
Yeah.
I can put them on the event list and then, I think, you send out an email with the annual fund drive like around that time, so I can link to the page on the website and stuff like that. Okay.
Okay.
Just a quick question, Teresa, have we seen a spike in library cards?
Um, a little bit.
But not really big.
There were some new people, there weren't a ton. I think some people, obviously the Town Hall website says we're still closed. So some people don't know we're open. But, you know, I think, actually, overall, our number is slightly lower than it was at the end of last year. But that could also be some cards expiring and people haven't come back in yet to get renewed.
But it also indicates to me, the idea of doing more active outreach to these newly-full-timer people may really pay off for us if we can get them engaged.
Yeah. I did meet somebody at the park and they are new cardholders. Yeah. They were asking about, you know, local activities, so.
Teresa, maybe a banner under the sign to say, "Open." Stores everywhere have these banners out, "Open," you know.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, we do, I think we actually do have an open flag. It might be at the hodge, but we do, I think. Somewhere there is an open flag that we can hang.
It's usually at the hodge, but you could plant it at the minor.
Yeah.
Can you put, we still able to put something on the green?
Yeah.
It's just, "Library now open," you know.
Yeah. We're limited to like 10 days, but it's available.
Welcome new neighbors to your public library.
Perfect.
There you go.
Free food.
Even better.
Great, great idea, Spoke.
Yeah.
I miss you a lot.
Since we're talking about that, the annual
I do too, Alan.
Annual board, thanks to donors. I have last year's list that each of you were assigned to agree to. Would you like to review your list and let me know if you want to do the same group or you want to change? How would you want to handle it? Assuming you want to send the thank yous again. This is the annual letter, each of us
Right.
is asked to write to five to 10 donors of significance for one reason or another.
Well, what do you think? Should we have a different group or have the same people? That's what's the question.
I think kind of rotate it, don't you think? You want to rotate?
I agree. I agree, Mary.
Okay, so then what I'll do is just take, I'll just move everybody down one and switch to another list.
Okay.
Okay.
Not to beat a dead horse, but we could add a little sentence. If you have new full-time neighbors, please tell them about the library.
Remember, this is your personal message, so it's not prescribed. Whatever you think will work. Okay. Good. I'm going to take this topic out of order, too, just because I'd like to get it done for now. Teresa, would you update the board on the Miller Studio project?
There's not too much to say. So in June, Sarah and I talked, you know, do you think it's time to re-approach this? So we had met, we had met the group, I think in March or February, was the last time the Arthur Miller Studio Group met. And then everything happened, so we just kind of put everything on hold and have had no discussions about it. But so we're in the same place that we were in February, which is Rebecca Miller has a proposal from the group to hire Sarah to be kind of the coordinator for the project and get everything going. I have been in contact with her assistant, who I've been told is the person to and he is in contact with Rebecca. And she is talking with her accountant, because things have changed a little since February. She's been advised to talk to him and see if it's still a feasible thing to do. So that's where we are. Apparently, they had a meeting earlier this, or early this week. They're supposed to be, she's supposed to be meeting with her accountant. So I should hear back hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay. Good.
Other than that, that's kind of where we are. It's a lot of just wait and see. Look at here.
Yay, finally made it.
Hey.
We were just about to take up the topic of changes on the board and you appear. Are you back?
No, no, I'm down here in Georgia, as you can tell, walking the dog, and she pulled me into a curb, so.
Oh, gee.
That's a dangerous date.
It's a dangerous. Dangerous dog. Dangerous dog. No, we're down here in Georgia and we'll be down here for a while, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you, if you hadn't heard, Mark sold his house in a flash and his family moved to Georgia for now. On route to, I'm sure, other places later, but.
Probably so, whenever that happens. My mother-in-law's still very feisty.
Mm-hmm, good.
Okay.
Well, we're sad to see you go, Mark.
I'm sad, I'm sad to go too, but this is the first board meeting that I've actually been able to have some wine with me.
Yay.
You're a rat.
You sold your house because of the, the market? You just left?
Well, you know, we'd always been planning on doing it, but, um, the, the, the market was really slow up until the, till the COVID hit. And
Right.
suddenly we saw these New Yorkers just coming into the town and we put our house on the market. Four days later, we were under contract and they wanted this out by the 30th. So it was a big slam dunk sort of thing and it was very hectic. I lost some pounds in the process, which I don't always recommend for everybody, but you know, it's worked out so far, so good.
Well, congratulations on that, but I'm sorry that you're, you're not here anymore.
Yeah, I know. I miss Roxbury was a town that I wanted to, like, just be forever and ever. But you know, it didn't work out that way unfortunately, but at least I got to experience it for almost eight years.
There you go. There you go.
Great town.
Well, we need to do all the best.
No, thank you very much. I'm gonna cut out and let you actually get down to some business.
Okay.
Mark.
Okay.
Take care.
Take care.
You, you too, Mark. You too.
Bye.
Bye. That was sweet.
It was amazing timing, but he must have been, he must have been chatting with us. So he just. Yeah. So, um, we're, we'll be looking for a new board member. Uh, I thought if you had some suggestions, um, you might speak to the person and anyone who's interested, as you probably recall, should approach Barbara Hendrick. That's the way that works. Uh, I'm, Barbara wants to know what she should say about the position and I'm just going to ask her. I thought that we're, we welcome all people who are interested, but we would be particularly uh, keen on someone with connections to the local schools. That was certainly a strength of Mark. And, uh, he often enlightened us on what was going on over at Chippewa. So we'll see what happens.
Even fundraising, if somebody has some fundraising experience.
Never would hurt.
That's right.
Any other thoughts on that, folks? I know you've just heard about it. So, but think about it. Think about it. So then we did a few other items of, uh, board staff changes. First of all, uh, Mary Schenke here, as you know, is a recipient in current Litchfield Magazine as one of the 25 most creative, intriguing, talented and giving folk around.
Congratulations.
There. That's neat. That's neato. Um, Sarah Griswold is going to retire. So, uh, Teresa is unhappy about that. We're happy for her, you know, she wants more time, obviously, that's a great thing. So Teresa, uh, is giving thought to a job description, hiring. She'll share some of that with us, uh, as she gets a little further into it. And then Julie, Julie Katie, who's hiding behind a black box here.
I am hiding.
Has decided that she is covering just the Pierce Tuesday and Thursday meetings. So she'll be stepping down as our, um, excellent recording secretary.
No. No, you can't do that.
You, you have to give at least five years' notice.
Yes. It's, it's unfortunately, I actually.
I may have wrote on it.
I, I've had a bit of a conflict for a couple of months and then the COVID hit. And I hung in because when we started doing things the new way, so I'm leaving you since this looks like we're gonna be doing this remotely for a long time. Um, I, I was giving you some time and not knowing you had an August meeting. So I tried to be considerate at least that way to you guys. But I do thank you and appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you.
We're sad to see you go, especially if you're a dog lover.
I know, I know. That's what, it's, but I'll still see you around town, but I've, I've got to focus on some other things. So.
Good.
Well, I'll miss you, Julie. It's been fun making eye contact with you.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss everyone too.
So if there is no further business, that's what I have. Teresa, anything?
I've got a list of things to do, so I'm ready.
This is not library business, but this town, is David Lintercombe okay?
I don't know the answer to that. David Lintercombe?
There was just, there was a thing on Facebook and I, and it was cryptic. So I just didn't, I, I thought, you know, does anybody know?
His house is under contract, so I don't know if he's simply moving.
There was a post that said R.I.P. and that was all it said. And I just.
That's not good.
I just thought, did something happen?
Not that I heard of, but.
We would know because that would be news. So probably who knows what that was.
I, I saw him in the past week. Uh, he, he visits, he helps out the, with my next door neighbor and I see his truck and I saw him three or four days, five days ago.
I was waving.
Sometimes he waves back.
Okay. Anything else, folks?
Don't think so.
Thank you for your time and as they say, we'll be in touch, sort of.
Okay. All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I mean, most.
Mary.
One second.
Yeah, everybody's. Okay.
Nice to see everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye.